Good evening and welcome to the Kent City Council Meeting for January 4, 2022. Feels like it's been an eternity in the last year getting to 2022. Every day feels like days long and the year flew by so quickly. But here we are in 2022 kicking off our first council meeting of the year. If everyone could please rise and join me in the flag salute. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Yep, thank you.
All right, Kim, could you please call the roll?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Mayor Ralph?
Here.
Council President Boyce?
Yeah.
Councilmember Fincher?
Here.
Councilmember Core?
Here.
Councilmember Larmour?
Here.
Councilmember Michaud?
Here.
Councilmember Thomas?
Here.
Councilmember Troutner?
Here.
Thank you.
All right, thank you, Kim. Next item is the approval of the agenda. Are there any changes from staff or council?
All right, thank you, Mayor. No changes, but I do want to note, we published an updated agenda yesterday afternoon. So if you're on the correct sheet of music, you'll see there's an item 4A6, Appointment to the Human Services Commission, and a corresponding item 8D.
All right, good news is, I am on the right sheet of music, so you will be able to stay on track. All right, item number four is Public Communications. We have several items that are listed on the agenda, but before we get to them, I want to start by reading a statement and speaking to concerns from our community and things that I have heard, that we've all collectively heard over the last week. So I, this is honestly, an issue that has rocked our community over the past several days. I'm going to start with saying, while we are confident the city followed best practices by promptly investigating the conduct of Derek Camerzal and imposing discipline, it is clear that the process did not produce the results acceptable to our community or, quite honestly, me. Earlier this afternoon, in consultation with the chief, I instructed our city attorney to reach out to the union's attorney to ask for Derek Camerzal's resignation. While there will be a cost associated with this, I believe that this is a necessary step to continue to build trust within our city and across the region. I want to say a heartfelt, deep thank you for all of you that have reached out and taken the time to share your stories with me, your personal stories and the impact that this has had on you and your families. The city and I have worked extremely hard to be, we've worked extremely hard in our anti-racist efforts, and I don't want to undo the great work that has been done. I believe that today's actions reflect the values that we hold collectively as a city, as a police department, and as a community. And they show our commitment to making Kent a place where everyone feels welcome and I guess that ends that statement. So very tough decisions, but I believe it's the right one for our community and us moving Council President Boyce?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I want to read a statement that represent the council. The Kent City Council condemns racism in all forms. While the council is extremely disappointed in Assistant Chief Camerzal's conduct, we don't believe his conduct reflects the culture of the Kent Police Department. This council has been and continue to be a strong leader on equity issues in the city of Kent and the Kent Police Department. Councilmembers have created two equity leader positions, are working on an ambitious equity strategic plan, and have provided funding for equity training for all city employees, including police employees. My colleagues and I will continue to condemn racism in all forms and continue to insist that all city employees, including police employees, abide by the city anti-racism value and policies. While personnel matters are not with the council preview, I want to thank the mayor for her leadership and for keeping the council informed throughout this process. Thank you.
Thank you, Council President. Okay, there is not an easy transition here, so I am just going to make it. We are going to move on to the first item under public recognition, and that is oath of office for myself, councilmembers Fincher, Core, and Troutner. Election results were certified at the end of November, and today we will officially, in front of you all and our residents, take the oath of office to support and do what's right for this city and be the voice that you all deserve in representing you. So with that, I am going to turn it over to Kim Komodo, our clerk, and we will move on. We'll go ahead and do mayor first.
Well, this is purely my honor, and this is my first swearing in. You definitely shouldn't have to do it.
You can raise your hand. I state your name.
I, being elected to the office of the city of Kent.
Have been duly elected to the office of the city of Kent.
Mayor.
Mayor.
For a four-year term expiring December 31, 2025.
For a four-year term expiring December 31, 2025.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will faithfully and impartially.
That I will faithfully and impartially.
Discharge the duties of this office.
Discharge the duties of this office.
As prescribed by law.
As prescribed by law.
To the best of my ability.
To the best of my ability.
And that I will support and maintain.
And that I will support and maintain.
The constitutions of the state of Washington.
The constitutions of the state of Washington.
And the United States of America.
And the United States of America.
Congratulations.
I want to know if my family, they are not going to be happy about this, but I feel comfortable doing a quick picture.
All right, ready, one, two, three.
Thank you.
All right, thank you.
Whatever, whatever.
Whatever looks for you.
Brenda, she can raise, she can raise her hand on the screen. So Councilmember Fincher? Councilmember Fincher, you can hear me, right?
Yes.
Okay. Yes. If you could raise your right hand and raise your hand for me. I state your name.
I, Brenda Fincher.
Have been duly elected to the office of the city of Kent.
Have been duly elected to the office of the city of Kent.
City council position number?
City council position number six.
For a four-year term expiring December 31, 2025.
For a four-year term expiring December 31, 2025.
Do solemnly swear that I will faithfully and impartially.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear that I will faithfully and impartially. Discharge the duties of this office.
Discharge the duties of this office.
As prescribed by law.
As prescribed by law.
To the best of my ability.
To the best of my ability.
And I, and that I will support and maintain.
And that I will support and maintain.
The constitutions of the state of Washington.
The constitutions of the state of Washington.
And the United States of America.
And the United States of America.
Congratulations.
She got a picture of Brenda on the screen now.
Okay, it's officially official. I am, I'm not used to being on that side of that. As Kim said, I'm generally the one giving the oath first for our new officers and things like that, so it is kind of nice to be on the other side of that for this evening. And congratulations to all three of our council members. And know that we've got lots of work ahead, so looking very much forward to working with you all in the coming year. Okay, the next item on our agenda is recognition for outgoing council president Troutner. It's the last time I maybe get to say those words.
Sorry to come down here to kind of separate this here. I think one of the hardest jobs, you know, we at council, we all have our individual thought process, but it's a tough job being a council president. And I think the work that Toni have done, when she came to council president, and then two months later, COVID set in, and 95% of your meeting was, was done on the computer, right? There was Zoom and that type of thing, and it really makes it hard to do your job and be effective. But Toni, I want to recognize you for being a good team player, a good team leader, helping us through the COVID, helping us get the team, keep the team together, so be able to make sure we continue to function as a council. This is my second go around to it, but your, your job have been harder than what I've gone through, right? Just by being on COVID. So I just want to take a moment and just say, thank you, I appreciate you, I appreciate your leadership. I think you did a phenomenal job guiding us through this COVID as the council president, and I'd like to say you did a stellar job. So for that reason, we want to recognize you, so you please come up here. First of all, that's some pretty flowers here. Where are you? Some flowers here that we wanted to recognize you for an outstanding job, really appreciate your leadership. And I know it was, as tough as it is being a council president, but being on COVID and on Zoom, being even tougher, so thank you for your leadership. So I have this for you, and we also have a nice plant for you. Let me put my glasses on so I can read this here. So it's a Toni Troutner. We sincere appreciate for your dedication service for the resident of Kent, council president 2020 through 2021, and this is presented by the mayor and Kent City Council on January 4, 2022. Thank you, Toni. And at this time, if my other council member, if you want to share anything, feel free to do so.
I'll go. Councilmember Michaud?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Council President Troutner, I just want to thank you, it's been a rough two years. And as a new council member, I want to thank you so much for making sure that I felt included and welcomed, and for all your guidance. I really appreciate it, and it meant a lot to me, so thank you.
Can I go?
Please, you in charge.
So first of all, I want you to know that I did reach out to your husband to ask you a super secret question. What are Toni's favorite flowers? He said anything tropical. And imagine that in Kent, in a snowstorm, not super easy to find anything tropical. Toni, I want to tell you that I have been so proud of your work over the last two years. You responded to your role as council president with nothing less than grace and professionalism, and you executed your duties in a way that you can be extremely proud of. You faced things that no council president has ever dealt with. Bill talked about it, a pandemic, remote meetings, and all the challenges that that brings, civil unrest, and honestly, a belief by some in our society that civility and respect no longer matter. Through it all, you responded with care and concern and a true desire to do the right thing for your community. I cannot say thank you enough for always representing your community, our community, in a way that they and you can be extremely proud of, and thank you for always taking the high road and doing the right thing. Proud of you. Councilmember Thomas?
I've been at this job for 20 years, and I got to tell you, Toni has been one of the bright stars in all of this, and I really appreciate, I know it's been mentioned already by Bill and Zandria, her leadership abilities, and I majored in that in college, studying for my MBA, and she has shown true leadership abilities through some very difficult times, no doubt. And I don't say this very often, but I'm, I'm doggone proud of you. You did good. Not always easy, I know what Bill's saying, it's not easy being the president of the council, but you stepped up to the job, you've done a fine job. Like the words that Zandria said, a welcoming way you welcomed her into the fold, into the family, that too shows real leadership, and thank you for, thank you for everything. You can applaud. I'm also shy.
I just wanted to take a few minutes and thank all of you for allowing me this opportunity to represent you these past couple of years. Like it was mentioned, it was a very difficult time, just a couple months into this, and all of a sudden, we were all at home, trying to maneuver through a scenario that we had no idea what to do. But through that, I am so proud of the work that we came together to do as a council. We had the CARES Act money, we distributed $6,500 to each business, that included 306 small businesses throughout the city when the pandemic first hit. We hired a recent equity manager to be able to get us through some difficult times. Early this year, if you can remember, we took a very difficult tax vote with House Bill 1590 to be able to make sure that some of the money would come back to Kent, and that gave us the ability to put together a co-responder model, where we hired mental health providers to work hand in hand with our police officers. The ARPA money that we were able to get and work through the process and through the budget adjustment to make sure that we were all happy with taking some of those buckets of money and putting them where we felt it was most useful for the city. We worked very, very well together, and I just want to again, thank you all for giving me the opportunity to be in this leadership role during those couple of years. I just want to ask all of you that I hope that you show Council President Boyce respect, and that you show him kindness. During these past few years, it was a difficult time, and sometimes I didn't always feel that I had that respect and kindness from some of you, and I just hope that you show that to Council President Boyce. And thank you, Zandria, for, there was one difficult day that we had had on council, and she showed up at my door with flowers after the council meeting. So I just think it's about us working together to do what's right for the city, and I think despite a lot of issues that we were facing as a council and with this pandemic, I am extremely proud of the work we did in the past two years, and I just want to thank you for that opportunity.
All right, before I turn it over to incoming council president Boyce for the announcement of council member assignments, Bill, I'm going to, I'm going to call you that because we've been friends now for a really long time. We came onto this council together, what feels like an eternity ago, and have worked together through a lot of big issues, important things for this city. I am looking forward to the opportunity of working closely with you as council president, and know that you will do what you always do, and show up and be a great leader, and help guide us through whatever the next year has. I'm, I'm done guessing about what's coming and where we're going to be a year from now. I gave up on that, but I know that you will be there and be, be a leader, and you will follow in Council President Troutner's footsteps in guiding this council through whatever is put in front of us, so very much looking forward to it.
Thank you, thank you, Madam Mayor. I keep my hair short for a reason, so you don't see the gray, right? So I will continue to keep it short. I do want to make some announcement, you know, as a council member, we sit on regional committees, we also sit on committees within the city council. At this time, I'm not going to make any changes to the regional committee or the, except for one thing on the city council meeting, I used to chair the economic and community development. I've been on that committee since day one. Kirk, I'm going to miss you, but I have asked Toni to take my place to chair that meeting. She'll be joining councilmember Michaud and councilmember Larmour for the economic and community development, and I will still be there with my heart, because I think that is so important, as many things we do within the city. So there'll be all the changes that will be taking place right now, everything will stay the same. So thank you, Madam Mayor.
All right, thank you, Council President Boyce. Next item on our agenda is Employee of the Month. So we're now circling back to recognition of the, the people that show up here in this building and our buildings all around the city every single day to make sure that our customers, our community members, our residents, and our businesses receive the very best service possible, the service that they deserve. So I'm really, really proud of our employee of the month. Each month, because this is a recognition that is brought forward by their peers, people that they work with that have recognized their commitment and dedication to our vision, mission, values, and goals here at the city of Kent, whether it be in a special project or just in the everyday, their everyday duties and, and showing up and being here for the city. So I am very excited to announce our January 2022 Employee of the Month. She found out about this last, Kim, was it last week? So we got treats, Kim brought in some great things, and we got to celebrate our employee of the month, and that is Tiffany Alcorn. Tiffany was hired on August 1, 2018 as a public disclosure administrator. As a public disclosure administrator, that is a mouthful. Tiffany is responsible for coordinating and responding to all public records disclosure requests that come into the city. She is also dedicated to providing timely access to government records while providing counter coverage and assistance to city staff and the public. Tiffany was nominated because she is always caring and compassionate, especially to people in need. Tiffany was nominated because she is always caring and compassionate, especially to people in need. She has worked tirelessly to streamline multiple processes in the city public records portal, and she has eliminated unnecessary processes and saved the department many hours, which is a huge accomplishment in our clerk's office. Public records is a significant task, very large task. And Tiffany has, has really helped in that process. She's also revamped the public records website and streamlined the records requests. She is an exemplary employee that is also friendly, caring and compassionate to everyone she comes in contact with. Her hard work and dedication to helping the public and staff is routinely recognized and appreciated. Recently, Tiffany has also met the challenge of gathering many police-related records responsive to public records requests from the police department to the city clerk's office. Tiffany met the challenge head-on, and it has resulted in a smooth transition of duties in a very short period of time. Tiffany continuously embraces our values, and we celebrate her as our January's Employee of the Month. She could not be here with us tonight, but I hope she's watching and can hear us all. Give her a giant round of applause. And then I'm going to turn it over to Kim to say a few words. So congratulations, Tiffany.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I'm pleased that Tiffany is being recognized as the city's employee of the month. And as Mayor Ralph conveyed, Tiffany is an, she's an outstanding employee, and she is very caring and compassionate to everyone she comes in contact with. I'm very lucky to have her as a member of my team. I have a rock star group of members, and she is a critical component. Tiffany couldn't be here tonight, but she did ask me to read the following message to you. I'm so honored to be chosen as Employee of the Month and thankful to be a part of the wonderful team in the clerk's office as a lot of the work and the customer, and customer satisfaction in relation to public records requests, requests really is a team effort. I'm thankful for all the support and encouragement I receive citywide. I've learned so much from my everyday communications with employees from every department around the city. My family is my why, and I am proud to teach my daughters a strong work ethic and to always stand up for what is right. I love what I do. I love that I come to work every day with the opportunity to learn something new while working in a field that I truly believe in. I greatly appreciate your acknowledgement of my contributions to the team and strive to make '22 a great year at the city of Kent.
Thank you. All right. Congratulations again, Tiffany. So proud of the work that you do and the way that you represent our city every single day. Now we get to recognize some community members. So here at the city of Kent, we have a variety of boards and commissions that are all citizen-driven. Our residents raise their hand, and they volunteer to be a part of the decision-making process here at the city of Kent in a variety of different forms. Tonight, we are going to be, I'm going to be asking the council to consider some appointments and confirm them to both our land use and planning and our human services commission. I'm going to start with land use and planning, and I'm recommending Chris McLean and Sandra Peria, Peria. I'm not going to do that right, and I apologize, and I'm going to do my homework tomorrow. I will tell you, I had the honor of being on the interviews with both Chris and Sandra, and they are really excited to be able to play a part in the long-range planning and visioning for the city of Kent. So land use and planning, I'm not going to say this because I believe it, but some people have said it can be a little bit dry. It's the, what is the city going to look like in 30 years? How are we going to plan out? It's a place that I started many years ago and absolutely fell in love with being able to set a vision for our community. When we were interviewing Chris and Sandra, we talked about things like the light rail station coming to the West Hill. And way back in the day on land use and planning, when we said, you know, that train is going to come there in 2024. Well, that seemed like an eternity. And you know what? It's not an eternity. It is coming up out of the ground, and that, that, that light rail is coming to the West Hill. And if it weren't for the work and the community outreach that the Land Use and Planning Board did and the recommendations they then made to council, we would not be in the position we were today to, to realize the massive community benefit that light rail is bringing. So that's just a, a little bit of look into land use and planning. And council, I am very, very proud to recommend Chris and Sandra both for appointment to the Land Use and Planning Board. The next appointment we have is for the Human Services Commission. Our Human Services Commission guides our process in, in acknowledging and recognizing the needs of our community. I'm seeing another one of our Human Services Commission members here and, and really taking stock in who in our community is providing services, what the needs are, making sure that we're distributing the money from the city of Kent in a, in a equitable and fair way. All of the things that go into making sure that our residents have access to the things they need to thrive in our community. I'm extremely proud of the work that our Human Services Commission does. And tonight, I am pleased to bring forward Nicholas Yu as the nomination for the Human Services Commission. So council, their, their bios are in your packet. Again, I'm asking that under consent, you confirm them and very much looking forward to the work that all three of our new board and committee members will be doing for the city of Kent. I know that we have some of them here tonight, but I was also told they didn't want to speak, so I'm not going to put anybody on the spot. All right. That brings us to the next item on our agenda, and that is community events. Council President Boyce, do you have any community events tonight?
Yes, ma'am. Thank you, Madam Mayor. I want to talk about some of the events that's going on at the Accesso Showware Center. So the show walk has been added Monday to their free indoor walking schedule for January and February. So you can visit kentwild.gov for schedule. The Tacoma Stars versus the St. Louis Ambush will be here Friday, January 7th, and Sunday, January 9th. The Seattle Thunderbirds will play the Spokane Chief on January 8th. The Seattle Thunderbirds will play the Portland Winter Halt on January 14th. Seattle Thunderbirds play the Everett Silver Tips on January 15th. The Tacoma Stars and the Kansas City Comets will play on January 16th. And the Halling Gold Trotters, which we all love, they will be here on January 27th. And my grandkids are already asking to go, so I'm assuming I will be there as well, too. So there's a lot of things going on at Accesso Showware Center, so you can always visit their website, accessoshowwarecenter.com. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
All right. Thank you. Any other community events from council? All right. I am not seeing any. So we will move on to the final item under public communications this evening, and that is our economic and community development report. And joining us tonight is Bill Ellis. Bill is joining us remotely, so his bubble has appeared there on the Brady Bunch screen. And Bill, I will turn it over to you.
Thank you, Mayor, and Happy New Year, everyone. Sorry to tell I'm a little congested. I'm just wanting to play it safe for everyone tonight. So wish I could be there with you, but I have a presentation tonight, quarterly update. Kim, I'm seeing infinite regress, so I'm sure my presentation will come up momentarily. But I would like to share a few. There we go. Some statistics, as I've been doing over the last several quarters. Start with just real estate activities. We all know Kent Valley is a very significant industrial area. Remarkably, over the last several months, in the Puget Sound industrial submarket, about 90% of all new construction activities being handled by our permit office. So there's just been a great amount of construction and busyness up and down the West Valley Highway, 212th, if you drive in those areas. You've been seeing the new buildings popping out of the ground. The graphs on the left kind of tell the story very simply. The blue lines in the top-left corner are REITs, which is real estate investment trusts, and other sort of outside capital have become a larger and larger share of those buying warehouses. The price per square foot, which since 2014, when I first started working here in the city of Kent, is just a straight line up left to right there. The pricing has just quadrupled, which is remarkable. This is kind of an old story at this point, but it's continuing to happen. And I think what's significant to share about it is, is these, is industrial demand growth continues. It has continued to be viewed as a safe investment. All the supply chain news that you've heard or perhaps experienced at stores, that only serves Kent's economic interests in the sense that we are the, geographically, the place for logistics and for supply chain. However, we are, rents are still about 2/3 that of Seattle. And why I say that's highly significant? Some of the leasing activity, you know, there haven't been leases signs. There's no business announcements today on some of the new construction. But I could forecast that a lot of the types of tenants, the types of businesses coming to Kent, I think in years past, you might have seen in South Seattle and Soto and other parts, things that perhaps aren't straight distribution uses, but in line with our Rally the Valley plan are actually going to take advantage of the cost advantages and the new construction and will be coming to Kent. Going forward, though, in future years, this 90% of new construction activity is not sustainable. The limiting factor will not, you know, despite all of the pinch points in timber, steel, labor, the, the pinch point ultimately will be, we will run out of land that is greenfield. We are seeing some warehouses being torn down for new warehouses that are bigger and newer, and that will increasingly be the infill picture going forward. Next slide, please, Kim. Yeah, thank you. So consumer spending, so another part of the economy. Last item we have here is from before Thanksgiving. I've been talking about this at other quarterly updates. Consumer spending in Seattle Metro is now up 28% overall. That means grocery sales, retail sales. Restaurants and hotel spending, I think this is something we've been watching very closely through COVID, is now substantially recovered. It's still running a little bit behind consumer spending as a whole, but as you can see, that, that line there for restaurants and hotels, which is the sort of greenish teal line, is nearly caught up to where it was in 2020. The most significant trailer at this point is entertainment and recreation. So it's great to see events at Accesso Showware Center starting to return. But that's the area of spending that are still, that is still significantly down from pre-COVID peak. Next slide, please. A couple of things that I've also been highlighting every quarter. So remarkably, you can see the, on the left graph there, the lower line is the below median wage employment rate as compared to employment rate overall. It continues to have diverged since COVID hit on the left side of the graph, and it continues to trail by over 34%. On the other hand, above median wage employment has almost caught up to January 2020 levels. So we're almost completely healed on the above median wage, but not on the below median wage. Next slide, please. I'm not going to be able to fully explain that for, for folks tonight, but I do have some interesting new facts that have been come out and have been released by these national groups that have been tracking Seattle Metro, in which we are part of. Left graph, moderate education level. So they're starting to track now occupation job postings. It's not the same as hiring, but job postings by different levels of education. And just one of the strongest areas of growth is those with job postings that require a moderate amount of education. So associates degrees, and that's, that's things less than a full bachelor's degree or graduate degree, trades, skills that we might associate with construction or truck driving. It's been a strong demand for that actually over the last quarter. And as compared to the highest level of education, you know, considerable is how the, as the researchers have termed it here, about 18% down. So job postings in the higher education level are down. I think this is to say that there's been stability for those who are able to work remotely. But in job posting and demand, there's been a great increase in a lot of sectors, construction, truck driving. They have educational requirements, but are not finding people with those educational requirements in, in the labor pool. Next slide, please. Just a couple of other things to sort of compare how Seattle's doing to the nation as a whole. It's a little misleading to look at this too closely, but the manufacturing postings are up. And it's always important to look at manufacturing in the Kent Valley. Are up over 3.5% over January 2020, as we went into the holiday weekend last, last week. That was below the national average, though, where the US had been increasing. But that, there was that big shoot or spike just before Christmas. You can see on the, on this Seattle Metro area for manufacturing job postings. I'm going to talk about more of that more in a second. And then on the right slide there, you see leisure and hospitality job postings are down from a year ago. I think as we see different types of retranchment and concerns about Omicron and so forth, there has been sort of a pullback in the Seattle area, and leisure and hospitality job postings are down as compared to the US as a whole. Next slide, please. So something I want to just, you know, narrow, narrow a little further for, I need to thank Stan Scholl of Alliance Velocity Consulting for this slide. I'm borrowing it from a presentation he gave recently in Kent about the Washington state space ecosystem. But in some ways, you can talk about that as the Kent Valley space ecosystem. The total amount of space jobs postings in the state of Washington is the orange line going from 2020 till roughly the last quarter of October, November. And the blue line is Blue Origin by itself. And you can see those two numbers kind of track pretty closely together. And Blue Origin had been hiring, or posting, rather, jobs a lot in the last quarter of 2021. There was a period, though, between, oh, I'd say the early quarters of 2021, where there was some independent growth of Blue Origin in the region. We've seen a lot of growth in satellite manufacturing as both the Kuiper Project and the Starlink Project from SpaceX have been ramping up. I think that's pretty significant strength, growth area if we're looking to diversify beyond rockets. Because a lot of people have talked about satellites. Next slide, please. And, but to undermine what I just said, we have two new companies in the Kent Valley that have their co-founders from Blue Origin. Austin Link, for instance, used to work at Blue Origin. I met him years ago when he first founded his company, Starfish Space, here in Kent. They have achieved some very significant funding. They've raised over $7 million to develop something called Space Tugs. They're calling it the Otter Space Tug, and it will drag satellites in and out of different orbits, work on issues of space debris. So they're, they achieved this funding in September. It was a very big deal, and they've been growing dozens of new employees, new positions. They've landed in Tuck Willa, just on the other side of the river, but, you know, closely associated here in the Kent Valley. Stoke Space Kent Business also got very big headlines, national headlines recently, where they raised $65 million in their Series A round. Andy Lapsa is the founder of that company also, with some Blue Origin ties. Their technology is, again, reusable rockets, but of an upper stage. So some of the, some of you may know this. If you go visit the Museum of Flight Space Museum, there is a display that shows the upper-stage rocket that works in delivering satellites and other vehicles, not just taking people to space, but then, or sorry, machines to space, but then that secondary delivery system. Making that reusable as well also changes the economics of the space economy. So they're securing $65 million of their strong growth. It's really starting to do something that we've talked about for a long time, which is how is the new space economy going to have coattails or have spinoffs or throw off other economic activity in the valley? And I think, you know, we're starting to really see that as the industry. Not that it isn't mature. We've had a long history of the space industry in the Kent Valley, but we're starting to see some exciting new, new companies to go along with that anchor businesses that we have like Boeing and Blue Origin. Next slide, please. And so we've been trying to do our part to promote that opportunity to manufacturing in the region. We're promoting the opportunities to supply to these companies. And we've been sponsoring of that, and I want to thank Michelle Wilman from our team and her good work, and also Councilmember Boyce from the Lodging Tax Committee, who was there speaking at an event we had recently in early December at the Accesso Showware Center with the Pacific Northwest Defense Coalition. Companies were on hand, Blue Origin, Starfish Space, Spaceflight, other companies who are perhaps a little bit difficult or different for the traditional aerospace supplier to know how to supply to or win those contracts. So we had some good speakers to kind of explain, and we had a room full of companies from, over 70, I think, attendees from many different states, California, Montana, Oregon, Washington, of course, and all over the region, where a lot of B2B activity took place here in Kent. And that's something we've long been after. We wanted to be seen as the scene for where this economic activity can happen and to make sure that these investments are locally enjoyed. So you can see our sponsors there did include the state of Oregon and also, of course, the city of Kent, Washington, where we're co-investing and making sure that this area is understood as the leader in space that it deserves to be recognized for. Next slide, please. Equally important, you know, we were recently invited to be speakers with the Museum of Flight Aerospace Joint Apprenticeship Committee and Green River College at the University of Washington Space Symposium. We were speakers on the Workforce Development Panel. And I think there was a real consensus between speakers, and I think many of the presenters you've heard from before, like Lynn Strickland or Tian Cheng. You perhaps have not met Dr. Dana Riley Black, the Education Director from Museum of Flight. But it was very interesting to hear the panel talk amongst themselves and kind of really agree that sort of the traditional ways of getting folks into this new space sector and making sure that it has broad access to local youth is going to require some sort of out-of-the-box kind of thinking, some non-traditional, new ways of promoting that. I know that council on its budget decisions late last year made I know that Council on its budget decisions late last year made some decisions around investing in STEM education. I think that's important to, as we look at this growth of this new industry, how are we thinking that it will be equitable and broad-based to local community? And there's a lot of members of, I just want to highlight a soccer club, professional soccer club called Space United. It is made up of SpaceX and Blue Origin employees. They also have a charitable foundation where they want to work with youth from underprivileged backgrounds and sort of use the the language of soccer to also teach science. And they're looking actively for soccer fields in Kent and Renton and to sort of put down their roots further and really engage. I think we're seeing a lot of activity with a lot of STEM education nonprofits wanting to encourage having the right skill match to the industry. Next slide, please. And then something of a non sequitur, but there's another industry of industrial cluster that has been growing steadily, and it needs to be recognized. Over the last several years, it's not, you might have noticed, a lot of brand names associated with Seattle have been gravitating into the Kent Valley, keeping in that same theme of business moving south. And, you know, we're welcoming Seattle Gourmet Foods. You might recognize the breath mints next time you go to Trader Joe at the cash register, that's them, our dilettante chocolates, and Passport Foods supplies a lot of restaurants around the region and a lot of grocery stores with a variety of different offering, ethnic offerings and Chinese cuisine and Mexican cuisine. And basically, interesting fact that we've just learned from our final report is if you look at the region and business licensing filed for all new food processing or food manufacturers over the last four or five years, about a quarter of it is all in Kent Valley, and of that, a large majority of it's actually in Kent. So it's one of the fastest-growing parts of our economy. So even though there's a lot of demand that is pushing for logistics and for speculative warehousing, we're seeing that the types of companies that are coming in because of our cost advantages has a healthy dose of manufacturing along with food manufacturing. And then because of our technical abilities and workforce talent and existing companies in the space sector, we're seeing growth there as well. So I think it's really important to be thinking about as we go forward in the years, what are the commensurate public investments that make us good stewards of the industrial cluster strengths that we have? And how do we think about sharing that broadly with our community? And so we've done a feasibility study now with King County and Port of Seattle. I've talked about it before. We've had presenters from King County talking about the Food Hub. We decided to rebrand that a little bit, the Kent Valley Food Entrepreneurship Center, thinking about job training into the food industry and the opportunities that exist there to get people a leg up, but also the ability to help existing food entrepreneurs who have faced challenges with scaling up their business, giving them the infrastructure that perhaps the private market doesn't supply them currently. What are some strategies, some really deep financial strategies to make sure that we can offer that that on-ramp for entrepreneurs from diverse backgrounds? And I'll have more say about this next week at ECDC Committee, but that report just finished up late December, and kudos to our consultant team, New Ventures, out of Chicago. They've done 83 different food hub studies, and they've really launched a lot of different food hubs around the country and highly impressed with their ability to engage with local stakeholders in the Kent community and pull together the interviews, the research with Kent farmers, Kent businesses, Kent nonprofits, and pull together a really good final report. So very excited about that. And with that, next slide, questions?
All right. Thank you, Bill. Very much appreciate all of that wonderful information. Before I turn it over to Council for questions, I, as you were talking about all the space activity that's happening in the Kent Valley, many years ago, when my 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 kids, they're adults now, were on the Kent Police Youth Board, their T-shirts had a quote on it that said, "Don't tell me the sky's the limit when there are footprints on the moon." And I feel like that embodies so much of what's going on in Kent, that the sky's not the limit, and we're doing amazing things, our companies are doing amazing things, and we're just really on the leading edge of of this whole space concept and economy and all of those things. So thank you for sharing all of that information with us. Council, any questions for Bill? Council President, I see you trying to push your button. I got you.
No, just a great, great presentation, Bill. And I know you and I have talked before, and I did get a call over the weekend from, I see Senova is out here in the audience. I know definitely some opportunities. I know she's looking to be able to partner more so with the stuff that's going on that Bill is bringing here, and I think it's a great opportunity. So just as we move forward, you know, with that partnership, I think that can really enhance things as we move forward. So just want to make that comment and continue doing the good job that you're doing. You're really, really just a model for bringing things and representing the city and just keep up the good work. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Council President.
Any other questions? Okay. Thank you, Bill, very much. Appreciate the report. All right. The next item on our agenda, and item number five, is reports from everyone you see seated up here at the dais, and Council Member Fincher over there on the big TV screen. It's an opportunity for all of us to report out on the work that's being done, both here at the city and then at the regional level. Council had a presentation earlier tonight on on grants and and our transportation system, and it's a really good example of why why all of us need to be engaged at a regional level and and making sure that Kent's voice is being heard. So I'm going to start with my report tonight, and I'm going to do it a little bit backwards. We'll talk about some of that regional stuff, but I want to start with just a great big thank you. I want to say thank you to the voters of Kent for putting your faith in me to lead this city for the next four years. I want to return that with a commitment to show up for you every single day and always do the right thing, to be here to listen and respond and have conversations. This is my home. I know it is the home for many, many of you, and a lot of our business owners that may not live in the city feel like they live in the city because they spend all their time here. But I I just want to to reinforce my commitment to all of you, to all of the employees of the City of Kent and everyone that's impacted by the work that we do. This is is hands down the hardest job I will ever love, and I am committed to it and committed to making the next four years as bright as possible for the City of Kent. Another thank you, I want to say thank you to all those amazing employees that through the last, so we've had all the COVID and all of those things, and then you throw in an entire week of snow and ice into the mix, and it changes everything dramatically. So what I can tell you is that watching comments on social media, answering emails and hearing hearing from folks, Kent, hands down, had the best, clearest roads of any city in the region. Not that I do not love my my brothers to the north and south and sisters to the east and west, but our our Public Works crew absolutely rocked through this storm. They were out there 24 hours a day, running 12-hour shifts, doing what it took to help people be safe and get to their destination. So I want to say thank you to all of them. I want to say thank you to our park staff, both operations and rec side. We had warming centers open at the Kent Commons and the Senior Center, and that meant that those people needed to, our employees needed to make it into work, so we had that option available. Our our severe weather shelter, I want to thank Council Member Troutner and her partnership with Kent Lutheran Church for doing that. Our volunteers that showed up to make sure that the folks needing to stay at the severe weather shelter had everything that they needed. Our parks operation staff for all of the the de-icing and the snow shoveling and our facilities group. Thank you to our permit center, our clerk's office, and our customer service departments for those employees making it in through the weather so that all of the services that you all need and expect were available and open to you. And our communications team for keeping everybody updated on all that was going on. I could go on and on, and I'm going to get in trouble for missing somebody, so I'm saying a giant blanket thank you to all of our employees that showed up last week while while our residents, hopefully, were staying at home and having some hot chocolate and playing in the snow with their kids. But just know that you have a very, very committed staff here at the City of Kent doing what it takes to provide you all with the services that you deserve. I'm going to wrap up with the regional part. I don't have any reports, just want to highlight my regional committees for the upcoming year, and I hope that the council members will do the same. I will continue to serve on the Puget Sound Regional Council Transportation Policy Board as the chair for this upcoming year. Also will be on the Operations Committee and the Executive Committee at Puget Sound Regional Council. I will be taking on a new role at the Regional Policy Council, which will be working with King County Council members and guiding that regional policy for all of us. And I will also continue to represent the city on the Flood Control District and South County Area Transportation Board or Skateboard. So we'll have reports for you at our upcoming meetings as things kick off for the new year, but those are the places that I will be focusing in the upcoming year. I also want to say very, very much thank you to our Chief Administrative Officer, Derek Matheson, for keeping all of us moving in the right direction all of the time. Without all of your juggling, none of this would be possible. So from the bottom of my heart, thank you, Derek. Council President Boyce.
Derek, have a report?
Derek, I just skipped you. Sorry. Look, I do that every time, you guys. It says it right here.
Yeah, you thought you covered me there. Now, thank you very much for the the warm words. I very much appreciate the opportunity to serve all of you. So I was going to say Happy New Year. Congratulations again to our re-elected mayor and council members. A big thank you to our outgoing Council President Troutner, and a warm welcome and congratulations to our incoming Council President Boyce. I think I mentioned last time that our city council retreat for 2022 is right around the corner. Our facilitator has met with the mayor, and the outgoing and incoming council presidents has interviewed some council members one-on-one by phone, and we'll complete that process later this week, and we should have a rough draft agenda right around the corner, after which department directors will start working on presentations and packet materials. The retreat, again, is going to be all-day Friday and half-day Saturday, February 4th and 5th, with the location to be finalized soon as well. The rest of my written report is in the packet, and happy to note, we have no executive session this evening.
All right. Thank you, Derek. Now, Council President Boyce, your turn.
Thank you, thank you, Madam Mayor. I do want to echo what you said about Derek. I mean, just an outstanding leader, organizational skill, it's just, I haven't seen anything like it. So really, just appreciate you and your leadership, and I look forward to working with you over the next couple of years as the Council President. And also, I want to echo the Public Works. I went to my favorite local store, QRC, and they were just amazed about the road, how things got cleaned up in Kent from Public Works and so on. I kind of wish I lived on the hill, they come up on those side streets, but they don't do that, right? So I end up paying the neighbor boy a lot of money to kind of clean my heels I can go down. But but the Public Works really just did a phenomenal job for us getting the road clean, and just kudos to those guys, just working around the clock so that we can move around and get to the place that we need to get to. We had a public safety meeting today. We had two really big things on the agenda, and they were both around law enforcement equipment. As you know, they kind of wear and tear on their equipment, so the council approved of them going out to a cooperative agreement group to get new equipment as needed. Councilmember Lomer didn't make an amendment to that, just so that the council can get a report, you know, every weekly, monthly, I'm sorry, every monthly, just saying what it looks like, what the cost is, so we can just kind of have some visibility on that. So that was what happened into public safety. Our workshop, the mayor talked a little bit about this early, we had our, between our economic development and public work, regional committee, we get lots of money for regional type stuff, you know, and we talked, we had a presentation on some of the things I'm just going to read out, and you probably, if I had to call this street out, you can probably visualize what it looks like now. One was the 76th Avenue Road where they raised it, that's down by Amazon. You remember, it used to be a flood down there of Amazon and Posey Brother, did a phenomenal job of getting money and then also matching it. Another one was 228 Quatero and 94th Place, another great project that was done. So we would write grants to get the funding, and the city matched some of these here. So another I'm going to read out is the one is called the Improvement of Mecca Street, 64th Avenue. I'm sure you're all familiar with Mecca Street, really just totally transformed that whole area down there, a lot of work. Let's look at some of the 2021. We did also down in the Hogan Park Furnish. That was a huge project that really looks good down by Russell Road. Couple other I'm going to read, this one here is on the South 240th Street, Russell Road to Lakeside Boulevard. And I read one other one here, just quite a few, we have so many that they went through. And another one I'm going to read, just the one on the Mecca Street Bridge. So you got a little green bridge down there, right, on Mecca Street? So they're going to be really going to be cleaning it up and going to make that look much better, so a lot of work. But that won't happen till probably 2023, but the planning process is has already started. So I did ask our Public Work Director, it's green, and they say, what color can we paint it? So I thought Councilmember Seth wanted to have a nice jacket on, we might want to paint it that color. And of course, Mary said that's her mom's favorite color. So we got, she had that color on, too. So that might be the color we end up painting. We'll see here. So that's it for our Public Works, work that's going on here in the workshop. I do want to add here, I currently is the Chair of the PIK Southern Cities Association, so I have a chair of that committee. Tomorrow, we have an orientation from 3:30 to 5:00, so I'm hoping council member will be able to join that. If you need the link to it, you can reach out to Kathy, and she can definitely get you signed up for that. I know our council member, we have not had any regional committee yet, but I'm going to go down, starting from my left to my right, and maybe you could just talk about the regional committee that you are sitting on, and I'm going to start with you, Councilmember Michelle.
Thank you, Council President. I am going to start with my committee here. Thankfully, Council President is letting me stay on as the Parks and Human Services Committee Chair, and we have a meeting on Thursday at 4:00. And then as far as my regional committees, I have traded Water Quality Committee for the Regional Law, Safety and Justice Committee, and our meeting is at the end of the month. I also serve on Kent's Human Services Commission, and we have a meeting later this month as well.
Thank you. Councilmember Cor.
Thank you, Council President. I serve as the Chair, and I will continue serving as the Chair for Puget Sound Cleaner Agency Advisory Council. I also sit on Domestic Violence Initiative Regional Task Force with King County and will continue serving with King County's Growth Management Planning Council. And I was also appointed on Association of Washington Cities Nominating Committee this year.
Cool.
Thank you.
Congratulations. Councilmember Lomer.
Thank you. I will continue to serve on the King County Affordable Housing Committee this next year, as well as I will also be continuing my work on the King County Aging and Disabilities Advisory Council.
Thank you. Councilmember Troutner.
Thank you, Council President. I will continue to sit on the Regional Transit Committee, but this next year, I will get to be the Vice Chair of that committee alongside King County Council Member, who will chair that, Dave Up the Grove. So looking forward to working with him in the coming year. The mayor had mentioned the severe weather shelter. I just want to take a minute to also thank a few people and just give you a few statistics about that. The severe weather shelter is activated by the city when certain criteria is met. And as you know, it was activated on December 27th through January 1st. On the 27th, we served 19 people. On the 28th, 24 people were served. On December 29th, 28 people were served. On the 30th, we served 10, and on the 31st, 14 people were served. So as you can see, some of our unsheltered residents took advantage of that opportunity to find a warm place to stay for the evening. I want to give a special thanks to Linda Stockham, who worked, who I co-chair the severe weather shelter with. Trying to organize this shelter and keep people socially distanced in an environment that was safe for everyone was really challenging, and she worked very hard to make sure that happened alongside Christine Horn and Marina Hansen from the Human Services Department. And I want to give a great shout out to Marina, who came in on December 31st to move a lot of the bedding and materials over to another building because we kind of had to move things around for that last night of the shelter. And then I see that Ty Whitfield's here in the audience, so thank you very much. I know you volunteered the last night to staff the shelter. Unfortunately, because of the difficulties and challenges with the shelter, it had to be completely staffed by volunteers. So that meant, you know, people like us had to stay overnight and staff the shelter and make sure that people could come and go and had a safe place to stay. So it really took a lot of people coming together to make this happen, and I just want to say thank you for that. That's it. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Troutner. I heard that Marina Hansen brought somebody else with. with her, didn't she? Was that, she drugged somebody else with them? That's the word I heard, so.
She had a crew. I'm not sure. Maybe it was our Economic and Community Development Director Kurt Hansen. I did not hear that. So thank you very much, Kurt, for being one of those people that helped and made sure that it was success. Thank you.
Okay. Councilmember Thomas.
Thank you, Mr. President. I belong to the Peugees Sound Regional Fire Authority, and along with Council President Boyce and Councilmember Troutner. We didn't meet in December, and like so many others, but we do meet tomorrow night at 5:30 via Zoom. If you're interested in becoming a part of that, you can call up the fire department at 253-856-4300. And that's all I have, Mr. President.
Thank you. And last but not least, Councilmember Fincher.
Thank you, Council President. Well, I gave my reports at the last meeting. We haven't had any meetings since then for my committees, but I do want to send out a couple of reminders on the KCD, King Conservation District. There is an election. I've talked about that before, how that election, we have a supervisor position that is open. We're trying to get that moved to the regular schedule, regular election schedule, but for now, it's still a special election. So what you need to do is go to kingcd.org, that's K-I-N-G-C-D.org, between January 18th and February 8th to cast your vote. There's one position open, and there are four people, four candidates for that position. So please take your opportunity. It's King Countywide. They provide a great deal of service, so please take the time and go check that out. Go cast your vote. The Arts Commission, we had December delights, which is in the judging period, but right now, that's for Kent Creates, and we have our new theme, Inspired by Greatness. So kentcreates.com, you can go there and take a look at the entries, and in the meantime, start getting your work together for the new theme. Remember that the International Guitar Night is coming later this month. I think that's week after next. So tickets are available for the Spotlight Series, that and the other programs. And the Mental Illness and Drug Dependency Advisory Committee, MIND, will be meeting the third week of this month. So that is it for me. Thank you. Oh, I do have one more thing. I had the opportunity on, just before my knee surgery, I met with Monica Alexander from the Academy, Police Academy, along with Councilmember, Representative Tina Orwal, and we met with Kumar, the first candidate through our Community Immersion Law Enforcement Program. And I am just as impressed with him as everybody else, wife heard talk about him. He is fabulous. I hope that you all get to meet him soon and have learned more about the program. We had a period with him, asking him if he had suggestions how, what his experience was. So he is pretty fantastic. Anyway, that is it. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Fincher. And as you can see, your councilman, well represented at the regional committee, we do have a seat at the table, and I think that's what helped bring things to Kent by having a seat at the table. So, Madam Mayor, that ends our report.
All right. Thank you, Council President. Moving on in the agenda, item number six is public hearing, and we do not have one this evening. Item number seven is public comment, and this is an opportunity for the public to speak to the council and the mayor on issues that relate to the business of the city of Kent or agenda items that will be considered at the meeting. Comments that do not relate to the business of the city of Kent are not permitted. And additionally, I want to remind everyone that the state of Washington prohibits people from using public comment period to support or oppose a ballot measure or a candidate for office. We do have a three-minute time limit, and Kim will put a timer up on the screen beginning after you come up to the podium. And please, when you come to the podium, state your name and city of residence for the record. Kim, I will turn it over to you.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. The first person I have speaking is Tiffany Janbajian, and she is speaking remotely.
You're up. Thank you very much. Thank you, Kim. As team members of the Kent City Council, thank you for the opportunity to share my testimony and concerns with you this evening. And I would like to take the time to thank Mayor Ralph for taking action, and all of you as well. I really appreciate the comment that you made at the beginning, Mayor Ralph. As you know, I am here today to express my concerns and complete antipathy to what I find to be a complete affront to the citizens of Kent. At 17 years old, I joined the United States Army four years after Timothy McVeigh, a former soldier bombed a federal building with men, women, and children simply existing and living their lives. By the time I joined and began my military career, like most soldiers in uniform, active duty, or in the reserves, we had to attend yearly training on extremism in the U.S. military and Army in particular. McVeigh was a huge stain on the Army's reputation, and they were actively trying to prevent it from happening again. Yearly training included images of McVeigh's items, many were Nazi paraphernalia, and as added warning, they included images of confiscated items from soldiers since McVeigh, who also collected Nazi paraphernalia. Those images were hammered into our heads so as to report other soldiers who were engaging in such sinister, nefarious conduct on becoming of the United States Army. I do not believe for one minute the officer in question wasn't well aware and/or acquainted of such training, especially given the rank he attained. Not given the extensive training we received, it is not possible. Furthermore, as a viewer of The Man in the High Castle, the Overgrupen Fier character, John Smith, was a murderous, vile, traitorous character, one whose willingness to turn his back on the United States in the fictional defeat we experienced in World War II is what got him to his rank. If you have an Amazon Prime account, all you need to do is watch the first few episodes to see that any association with the character like Smith is ludicrous and inappropriate. Anti-Semitism was just one of Smith's character failures. The others I won't even need to mention, but they are immoral. Lastly, my family includes folks of Jewish descent, and I've had the honor of working with a Holocaust survivor while I was in the Army. This can never happen again, and anything less than a resignation is unacceptable and indignity to the soldiers that died and were wounded, mentally and physically fighting the scourge of fascism and Nazism during World War II. Those were my comrades who served. Some of these soldiers never came back and are still buried far away from their family members. And most importantly, the affront to our Jewish, Roma, LGBTQ+, African, Catholic, among many others affected by Nazi tyranny community members is unconscionable. We will not be silent. We will be vigilant. We will not condone Nazism in Kent, and we need to send a message to the rest of the country that this disgrace is not accepted in our community. Thank you very much, ladies and gentlemen. I appreciate you.
Thank you, Tiffany. The next speaker is Monica Mendoza Castrejon, followed by Zenobia Harris.
Hello. Good evening, council members, Mayor Ralph, audience members. My name is Monica Mendoza Castrejon, and I am a proud Kent homeowner, resident, born and raised here in the city of Kent. And I'm here to speak on the issue of the resignation of Officer, former Officer Camerazal. So what, thank you so much to Mayor Ralph for your action, all the council for what you did. That is definitely what was needed. But it came too late. From when I read in the newspaper, information was known previously, and for months to occur, and for this just to have happened, I think that it was too late. We, the city definitely needs to make sure that we condone anti-Semitism. We must make sure that we take a stance against racism. And this isn't anything new. For the past few years, leaks like this have exposed that unfortunately, the Kent Police Department has been comfortable with issues like this. And action has been either too late or has not occurred. Now, because of this, I strongly recommend that the city council and the mayor need to make an independent police accountability commission. Equity advisors are fantastic, definitely a great step, but it is not enough. We need more. And an independent police accountability commission would prevent having to always resort to the demands of public pressure far too late. Again, thank you so much for this action, which occurred, but we need to make sure that we need, that we take a more proactive approach, and that the city does not ensure that this happens again. Thank you.
Thank you. The next speaker is Zenobia Harris, followed by Gwen Allen Carstens.
Good evening, Council Madam Mayor. My name is Zenobia Harris, and I am the CEO for the Kent Chamber. I will be reading my prepared statement in reference to the Kent Police Assistant Chief suspended for displaying Nazi insignia, and this statement will be given to the city clerk as well. First, let me say thank you to the mayor and police chief for their swift action in addressing the issue, and also for the statement that you made when we started today. The Kent Chamber of Commerce advocates on behalf of the business community on issues that impact businesses. The Chamber has long supported the Kent Police Department's continuing efforts to increase staffing to improve the safety of the community. The city of Kent enjoys a vibrant sense of community and values our standing as the eighth most ethnically diverse city in the U.S. The actions of the Assistant Chief, as unintended as they are listed, should be addressed with additional actions that include, but are not limited to, education and rechaining for everyone at minimum. Safety has a direct impact on the bottom lines of our businesses. We, the Chamber, support the growth of retention of officers that are in tune with the community that they are sworn to serve and protect. The Chamber would encourage that the Assistant Chief engage with other leaders, community leaders, to improve the awareness of the impacts of these actions. Let's continue to build bridges of understanding and trust between the community, the police department, and the business community. Thank you.
Gwen Allen Carstens, followed by Ty Whitfield.
Good evening, everyone. I hope you can see I'm smiling, but my eyes, I won't take this down. But I would just like to say Happy Christmas, Happy Kwanzaa, Happy New Year, and happiness to those who can't seem to find it wherever they need it. I don't know where that came from, but hello. First of all, I just want to say, I've been a resident of the city of Kent since 2004. And when I started living up on East Hill, I wasn't engaged in the government, or how the city works, or anything like that. It was because I was given the opportunity to become the Executive Director for KABAC, Kent Black Action Commission, that I found myself being in places and meetings and all this that I really didn't know why, but now I know why. And the reason I know why now is because there was a statement or a quote from one of our famous leaders in the past, one of our African-American leaders, and he simply said, "The chickens have come home to roost." And I don't know if you didn't know what that means, but to me, that means, when something insidious has been going on in your town, or your city, or your state, or wherever you lived for a long time, and it seems that people know about these insidious things that are going on, but no one is stepping up to the plate to make those things better or make them right. With regards to the issue with Mr. Camerazal, I think I'm saying his name right, Camerazal, I find it disturbing that this man was given the opportunity to be a part of who he demonstrated that he was by being allowed to be in the police department for 27 years, and without, so we've been told, any kind of infraction, any kind of complaint. Me personally, I find that hard to believe. I find it hard to believe that there were other police officers who were, you know, in with him, as I understand it, making jokes and, you know, making fun of what he was doing. Otherwise, I don't think he would have felt as comfortable as he was to make any statements or to put that symbol on his door. So I'm saying all that to say that we need to do better at accountability, we need to do better with transparency, and we need to do better than saying, "My hands are tied." As far as leadership in this city, Dana, I appreciate your strength and courage to do the things that you do, and I also appreciate it that you listen when I call. I was not in the, I was not going to be running around the city trying to make all of this a big effort or whatever. I have learned that when there's something going on with the city, I have the phone numbers that I need to call, and I will call those numbers, which is what I did. Whatever comes about before, with somebody else and what they have to say, that is not on me. I'm just here to say that we must do better as a city. We cannot pretend that we don't have these airs of things that are not good for the city at a hold, at the hold. In my mind, there should have been no question, he should have been fired on the spot when things happened. And because that didn't happen, it was suspect to me and to others. So we need to get this kind of air out of our city, otherwise, we're not going to progress. That's all I have to say.
Thank you. The next speaker is Ty Whitfield, followed by Cliff Cawthon.
Happy New Year. This is Ty Whitfield, living in Kent. I am an apostle, a community leader, work in all different community buildings. First, also, hello, city council and the mayor. I want to definitely take the time to tell you thank you. I had a personal call with you also, and we didn't even talk about resignation, so that was something really big. But to know that you have been listening, that you're open for us to be able to call you, and you took a chance on being able to make a stand like that, I appreciate that. Now, I was talking to the community leaders. At this point, we have to, as a community, come together. The plus thing about this is that unless there was change, we wouldn't even have this to be exposed. Five, 10 years ago, this might not even have been talked about. But now it's talked about because we are a city that has over 133 cultures. We have ethnic backgrounds. Looking at our city council, we have all different cultures that you can think of. So that means that we are going to be a pioneer, and we are going to be the ones that people are going to watch. They're going to look at us. And if we don't make the stand, and if we don't come together, and if we don't expose these things, which is going to hurt. And it is going to be hard to talk about. And it is going to be, you know, we don't talk about racism like we need to. We don't find out about people's cultures like we need to. But at this point, because of our city being the top city, that is the expanded city that is growing throughout the nation, the nation's going to be watching us. So we have to think in our mind, what type of example are we going to set for the nation? Not for the other counties, but for the nation. Us as a community have to come together and feel comfortable to come together, first to ask unification for us. And then once the unification comes for us, then we can make the accountability and be able to be sensitive and be able to communicate with our government so we can work together as one. So I say, let's make a solution. Let's change the gap. Let's come together. Let's talk about some things. Let's bring sensitivity to our community, unity in the community.
Thank you. The next speaker, Cliff Cawthon, followed by Charmaine Boston.
Thanks. I'm absolutely disgusted that Officer Camerazal was allowed to flout Nazi iconography, and that action was slow. Well, I'd like to praise you, Mayor Ralph, for asking Camerazal to resign. I've never really seen a police officer held a combo by you, Mayor Ralph, or you, Council President Boyce, or many of you in this room. In fact, let's not forget that Councilmember Thomas called Michael Brown a criminal after he was killed. Now that it seems that this incident has made it into times, now we want to do the right thing? Camerazal was an anomaly, was not an anomaly, but indicative of a culture that accepts racism within its ranks. That's a problem. The culture that Camerazal was able to get away with in flouting his Nazi iconography is still embedded within our police force. We need action. Not talk, not phone calls, not hand wringing, training, or shallow statements of diversity, equity, and inclusion. We need transparency, accountability, and a fierce commitment to our BIPOC, Jewish, LGBTQ, and marginalized neighbors. We need an independent community police commission that can actually be an independent watchman. Madam Mayor, you also, in addition, is you need to stop your racist and reactionary efforts to curb reform at the state level and bring justice or reforms that were put into place to bring some justice to families that were affected by police accountability. And you going out there and doing that in public is an insult, not just to me and my family, but to so many families that make up the numerical majority here in the city of Kent. So I ask you, that if we have a conscience, we need to act. We don't need any more grandstanding. We don't need any more hand wringing. We need to act. And I'd seriously have you consider the putting that police, independent police commission in place. Because every time we have to come back here and talk about this, it's an insult to us all. Anyway, never again, Black Lives Matter, period. Thank you.
Madam Mayor, I didn't miss where he was from. What city?
Duke. Come on, man.
No, I missed where he's at. That's good. Thank you. Oh, really?
The last speaker is Charmaine Boston.
Good evening, everybody. Happy New Year and all that good stuff. My name is Charmaine Boston. I am the community liaison for- Boston. I am the community liaison for Kent Black Action Commission, KABAC. The statements I'm going to make are personal statements. They affect me, they affect this nation, they affect this community. Through history, we've found a way to separate each other. You're either Catholic, or Baptist, or Lutheran. You're either black, or white, or pink with purple polka dots. We have found a new way to separate each other, vaccinated or non-vaccinated. It bothers me that the thing that separates us the most is right and wrong. Right and wrong doesn't have a color. It doesn't have a religion, it doesn't have a favorite football team, none of that. And we have failed, as a world, in my opinion, compassion, right or wrong. Just because you've been doing it for a long time, doesn't make it right, if it's wrong. So we need to start thinking about right and wrong. Not, well, you know, my friend won't like that, or I'll lose money if I do that. That's not the thing that everybody else is doing. It's either right or wrong. There's not fifty shades of gray in between those things. It's right, or it's wrong. So, in my opinion, Kent is a great city. I love Kent. My kids were educated in Seattle schools, but all my grandkids went to Kent schools. I work at Shorewear. I love Shorewear. I love Shefrid. So this is our community. We have to fight for it. We can't allow diversity and secrets to keep us separated. It's not a good thing. It's not. It separates us even more. We can't keep secrets. We can't keep skeletons in the closets. We have to do the thing that our heart tells us is right. Not the thing that our neighbors are doing, or our friends are doing, or we're worried about. That's just not right, you know? In my heart, it ails me, and it hurts me. When you go down the street, if I cut you, you're going to bleed. If you cut me, I'm going to bleed. And when we get to the hospital, we're not going to be worried about, did that blood come from a black woman? Is it type of blood I need? Are they in my pay grade? We're going to be worried about, how much can I get? Is it my type? So it's time for our community to stop battling over things that's not a battle. It's right, or it's wrong. And it's right and it's wrong, no matter who's doing it. If you're a Catholic from the Down Valley in Kent, and you got pink purple dots, it's wrong. So my challenge to our city is to be better about that. Be better about doing the right and wrong thing. Thank you. You guys have a great 2022. And my challenge is, what are you going to do in 2022? Thank you.
Thank you, Charmaine, very, very much.
Mayor, I do not have anybody else signed up to speak.
All right. Thank you all for coming down this evening to talk about these very, very important topics. And Charmaine, thank you for your wisdom. You're right, we are all in this together, and that is how we need to respond, is together. Because at the end of the day, we all love this place, and that's what it means to be a part of this amazing community. So, thank you for that message. All right, we are going to move on in the agenda. Item number eight is the Consent Calendar. So the Consent Calendar is a compilation of items that the council has addressed in the committee meetings over the last several weeks. They have received presentations, had the opportunity to ask questions, and they have moved out of the committee without any controversy. We have items A through D on the Consent Calendar this evening. Council President Boyce, do you have a motion?
Yes, thank you, Madam Mayor. I'd like to make a motion to approve item A through D on the Consent Calendar.
Second.
A motion and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries seven zero. All right, we have two additional items on the agenda this evening. Under Other Business, we have a parking ordinance for Green River Road. And joining us is our Public Works Director, Chad Behren.
Thank you, Mayor. Kind of an odd thing to bring in an ordinance. This is something that we took to community, to committee, Public Works Committee last night. We typically would just bring this to the Consent Calendar as a proposal to update the parking ordinance to include an area along Green River Road underneath the South 277th Street Bridge, shown here in the far south end of town. It's an area that we annexed to construct the 277th Street Corridor. And underneath the bridge, which is shown there in the upper part of the picture, is Green River Road. Along that area, we've had issues with parking, illegal parking, or parking, overnight parking, and a lot of illegal dumping, which we show here. So we're proposing to include no parking zones in areas where it's really narrow, or we've had issues with people partying out cars, or taking RVs, and then putting some parking in for daytime use for people who want to fish, or use the Green River Trail. Again, passed three zero last night at Public Works Committee.
All right. Any questions?
I've seen those.
It is certainly something that we have received significant concern from our community regarding, and definitely needs to be addressed. I know Public Works Committee had the presentation last night, so it looks like before us, we have a parking ordinance for Green River Road. Is there a motion?
Yes, Madam Mayor, there is a motion. I move to adopt ordinance number 4424, amending Chapter 9.38 of the Kent City Code to add no parking zones and prohibit overnight parking at locations along the Green River Road.
Second. Right, we've got a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? Seeing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes seven zero. Thank you. Item number 10, Chad, you get to stick around. We have a bid presentation on the six million gallon number one reservoir recoding and vent replacement project.
Thanks, Kim. Kim's got the presentation up. This is a bid to, this would be to strip the paint or coating off of the inside and outside of the six million gallon one tank. This sits up on 98th Avenue and serves a good portion of the valley. And the tank, actually that middle picture shows our, get that thing to work, our 125K tank, our 125,000 gallon tank in the background. That was coated recently. This six million gallon one needs to be coated. It was built in the late 60s, coated once, I think in the 80s, and needs to be done again. So it also includes vent replacement to bring it up to standard, and then the catwalk on the side there, the ladders need to be upgraded, stairwell. So again, this we received, this is the internal part of the tank, we stripped down and recoded. Received three bids, the low bid was for 3.02 million, and the engineer's estimate was 3.6. So a good bid, and looking forward to getting this done.
All right. Chad, I will admit, when I started hearing about the six million one tank, I thought that it was 6.1 million, not, it took me, it took me a minute to get that it was number one. I know that now, but early on in my, my days in Public Works Committee, I was like, oh, 6.1 million, that seems like an interesting number. So, do we have a number two?
There is a six million gallon number two, yes, north of here.
Okay. All right, council, are there any questions for Chad? I am seeing none, so a motion would be in order to approve the six million gallon number one reservoir recoding and vent replacement project bid.
Madam Mayor, I move to award the six million gallon number one reservoir recoding and vent replacement project to long painting company in the amount of $3,022, and, $3,022,229.32, and authorize the mayor to sign all necessary documents, subject to final terms and conditions acceptable to the city attorney and Public Works Director.
Second. The motion and a second. Is there any discussion? Okay, seeing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries seven zero. Thank you. We do not have an executive session this evening, so that brings us to the end of our agenda. I am going to end with a quote from our dear friend Charmaine Boston. "What are you going to do in 2022?" I think that's a fitting way for us to kick off the year. There is bright, there is a bright future ahead of us. At some point, we will be out of our maz, we will be back in community and working with each other closely. I encourage all of you to not let too much time go by before you reach out to the people in your lives that you care about, or honestly, that you're concerned about. Because it is communication and conversation that makes us strong. Another quote from my friend Ty Whitfield, unity in the community. I think that's the other thing that we need to really all be focused on, because it is what makes this a great place. And I can say that with all of my heart. So, thank you all for this evening. Appreciate the willingness to engage in conversation. And with that, we are adjourned.